All right, it's 3:06. Let's all stand up for the Pledge of Allegion.
You don't have to talk right into it, they're really good.
I know.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
They're Tony-inspired.
I know. Can you tell I came from the back, right?
Yeah.
Stop giving me all this candy.
All right, so we'll have, go ahead and have roll call. In attendance, we have Carol, Ed, Doug, Bob, and myself. I need a motion for approval of the final agenda. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, public comment. Laura, what do we have?
I have one. Joe McCulca regarding lawn disease, and they were looking for some technology help. Just reminder, you got three minutes.
Hi, Joe McCulca, Stony Brook at Gateway. And I'm here to discuss a problem that I know Flavi and I had discussed a while back concerning lawns and lawn diseases. We're having a real problem, and I was wondering if any of you are having problems in your community. We just had a big to-do at a recent board meeting where a lot of letters went out about the lawns and we're looking for some help.
We're having it, and it's big. There's two diseases going. You have the mosaic, and then there was another one right now that my guy called it stringers, stringer's disease. It's where your grass, instead of like the floor temp, instead of it going down and in, it stays on top of the ground because the soil is...
Compacted.
Well, I don't know if it's compacted, it's diseased. So they're telling me that I've got to pay an extra fertilization process to go in there to stop it. I know my yard and my next-door neighbor's yards look like crap.
And then why you aerate to it? And this aeration helps also?
You can aerate it, but this, this is, he says, is the soil is diseased.
And it's also something, because like Phil came out, he does mine with Going Green, and he said you can't treat it immediately because you have to wait.
It's water.
Well, it's water and there's something, some other condition, I can't remember exactly what he said, but like you can't treat it immediately. Like it's going to be thirty, sixty days before you could see any treatment because of some kind of timing or soil considerations, or I can't remember what it was, but...
But to answer your question, it is a problem in all of Gateway.
Okay.
Big problem.
Okay, so Joe, I spoke with Margaret before this, since I know we all interrupted you and you got like twenty seconds. So I will give you the best partners to go with, which is University of Florida. Extension Lee County will be Dr. Stephen Brown, and Phil will be the one that heads over regarding the sugar kiwi mosaic virus.
Is that what you were talking about, Phil, before?
I don't know who you were talking about, but Phil, it's, he's in Tallahassee, so he's the one that you would collect samples of the sod, send it out to Tallahassee, they will test it, and they will tell you, yes, it's sugar kiwi mosaic virus. If that's the case, nothing to do besides...
If not to me, could you get that information over to JT and me, if he can copy me? I'd love that, appreciate it very much.
I brought that up with my guy, and he indicated, I'd heard people saying that Palmetta is the way to go, it's the more expensive, inexpensive. He says Citra now is basically the same as Palmetta, and Citra is a better product, as I understand it.
I will tell you this, so we did, so this happened to us six years ago, Magnolia, it was the first case in Lee County. So we had different test areas of how to replace it, what to replace it with, how to eliminate it, how to cut it, how to get it out. We have Palmetta, which is same price as Floritan, and the Palmetta will have the disease, however, it's asymptomatic, it shows no signs. So if you want to go to Magnolia Lakes, I'll tell you the location on the common area where we have Palmetto. And you look at the lawn right now, and you say it's beautiful, but it does have the virus. And you look at another area that's Floritan, has the virus, and it looks bad.
Looks bad.
Citrus blue, you have to be worried because it does absorb a lot of nitrogen, and we are in reclaimed water. It has a tendency to grow in a carpet-like fashion, so what happens is the roots don't go down in, they become fluffy. So if it's not in a straight yard when the mow goes in, it will sculpt the grass. So that was our issue, because we couldn't control the nitrogen because we are reclaimed water, we stay out of it, and it was more expensive.
Were we saying in the common area as well? The common area or just on resident property?
Okay, but I appreciate get that information.
So I'll send you the information, and then the contacts. I'll have your contact.
This seems, anyway.
Yeah, I know, I need, if you need to speak, I need you to come to the mic. You good, Joe?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
We've had lawn issues in my community, Carina, and it's been diagnosed as root rot, and their ground just, I mean, the grass just dries out.
So root rot is a fungus, so what it does, it almost looks like you overwater your sod, it completely dies, and it almost looks like chinch bug. You just pull it out in clumps, and it doesn't go. So that's something else. That is treatable, though. Sugar kiwi mosaic virus is not treatable because it's a virus and not a fungus. So root rot, it is in the soil and it is on the grass, but it is treatable.
Well, can we hire you?
No, I learned way too much about sod.
Sod ponds.
Sod ponds, fish.
Bee.
Bee.
I mentioned it just because it's another problem that's around.
Real state in Brazil. Real state in Brazil.
Real state in Brazil, yeah, that.
We have no other public comment.
Aye. Local achievements and recognition?
Just, it's the start of our fiscal year, and I want to give kudos to Laura and you all for getting through the, with the new assessment methodology, and the budget, and passing, and getting it uploaded, and doing everything that it took. I know it was a lot of work. She has been buried at a keyboard for the last two weeks, so I do have to commend Laura and her efforts this year. She did take the lead in making this her own, so, good job.
Call her Elton John. She's at the keyboard.
I just have one thing, and I think I would like for you to pull it up, the email that we got for leadership of the Stony Brook HOA regarding the transition. I forwarded you guys the message that I got from their HOA president, JT, and I know we all received an email. I forwarded it to Tony because I was the only one that was not included regarding the huge accomplishment that we have. So if you'd like to read that into the minutes.
I can.
I can, I have it right here. It says, "Thank you." This is the subject. "Good morning, Chelsea. I wanted to take a moment to thank you, Laura, all five supervisors, and the staff at Gateway Services for your efforts in helping Stony Brook become private. I'm grateful that we all shared the same goal and were able to work together to make this a reality. I'd also like to extend my appreciation to Tony while working with Katie in making this process smooth for both the district and Stony Brook. On behalf of my Board of Directors and the residents of Stony Brook, thank you. JT Thomas, President of Stony Brook."
So, again, thank you all."
It was a pleasure, it was a great team, quite frankly, collaborative, and I appreciate everybody's work on it, too. Helped me an awful lot.
All right, so thank you. Advisors, committees, and items to the report?
I move on Agenda Item 7, A, B, C, A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes?
Move on Agenda Items 8, A, B, C, and D.
Second again.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items. Anything to pull?
No, I move on Agenda Items 9, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N, as in Nancy.
Who would he?
All right, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
That was probably the longest consented, that was the whole alphabet.
That took three hundred pages of print.
All right, District Engineer Tetra Tech update?
He is not on, that's because this is the catch-up, but I can run through just the project updates.
Is he going to be on later on?
He'll be on at the next meeting, because that's normally when we do their updates. So I can run through, and then if anybody has any questions, I can give a brief update on each project. You want me to do that?
Yes, please.
Pump station, irrigation pump station generator, it is on the concrete pad. We had the shutdown earlier this week, so that way they could do the transfer switch and the electricity to the generator. So thank you, everybody, for your patience on that. The force main and irrigation main improvement project, we're waiting on HMGP funding. We did get the SRF funding, which you just approved the resolution, and your consent agenda. The lower Hawthorne well, we're closing that project out. There's just some minor things, like some painting of the pipes, but that project will be closed out by the end of this month, if not sooner. The Gateway Utility Storage Building, there's a couple of final punch list items, minor things, but the building, obviously, is constructed enough, and we're working on getting it organized and filled. The FY24 Lakes Construction Management, MRI is putting sod down on Stony Brook's pond, fifty-seven today. They have to irrigate that and water that for at least thirty days and make sure it's established, because we were having some issues. They came and tried and relied on Mother Nature, and Mother Nature didn't help, so some minor punch list items on that. The FY25 Lake Bank Construction, Metar has finished these projects, this will be closed out. All of the ponds are done for them. Lake Bank Restoration HMGP, Paul and Stephanie are walking with Tetra Tech tomorrow. Some of the twenty-one ponds that are on the remainder of the priority list that are part of the HMGP grant that we received, the million dollars for design. So as we get to thirty percent design, we'll submit that to the county, because we're hoping to dip our hands into two different grant pots to hopefully make this a hundred percent free. Sherman Soccer Complex Parking Lot Expansion, we're at ninety percent design. They're going to wrap up that design of the parking lot, essentially mirroring the back parking lot. I guess proceeding with construction will depend on the conversations that we're having, but they'll go ahead and submit for permits. Public Works Building Relocation Site Plan.
Question.
Yes.
Do we have to pay to submit for permit?
Yeah.
Can we hold off on that until we decide whether we really want to move forward?
We could. The problem is, is we had submitted some time ago, if you recall, it was a wetland back there, and we had to withdraw. If we wait too long, it'll be treated as a new application instead of as like a resubmital. So a new application would cost us more if we just resubmitted.
What cost are we looking at?
I think it's like twelve hundred bucks for a new application and like two hundred bucks for a resubmital.
Yeah, and the question, and the question on that also is, when was the original application submitted, prior to the new rule changes for South Florida?
I'd have to find out. Yeah.
Because they...
To be under the old rule?
Possibly. That's something that can Tetra Tech can check, because they radically changed the rules, South Florida did.
If we get the permit, we have like three years to...
What does the permit cost? I don't know if it's ten dollars or two thousand.
Couple hundred bucks.
Okay, never mind.
So, so moving on to the Public Works Storage Relocation, you just approved the interlocal agreement for us to work with the county. This will go on the Board of County Commission meeting in November for their approval. So hopefully we can get that lease or ease done. Gateway Commons Park and Admin Building, contractors moving along, they're pouring stem walls. Ed and I took a gander out there last week. If any of you do, or if any of, oh my goodness, I'm stuttering. If any of you are interested in going and visiting the site, please let me know, and I can schedule that. And we'll have to wear, you know, our hard hats and our boots and our vests, but I can schedule that with the superintendent.
That's if you're doing something other than a cursory drive-through.
Yeah, yeah. If you want to physically walk onto the site, let me know. So they're plugging along, we have some, we have some submittals, RFIs, we're going through picking out colors and things like that in preparation of the building. We will have a change order coming in front of you. And I'll mention this now, so when we originally thought of this project going with FPL on all of the lights, we said, okay, this is, like, this is what we want to proceed with. After looking at the tariff more closely, the bollard lights, so like the little pedestrian lights that are along the sidewalks, it's cost prohibitive to go with FPL, it's, it would, we'd be paying tenfold for the bollards. So we are looking at buying those and having the electrician, and then us owning the bollard lights, but everything else is FPL.
And when you say everything else, that would be what?
Parking lot lighting, essentially.
Parking lot only?
Yeah.
We're not talking about pool?
Elevated lighting.
Or any other amenity lighting at this point?
Correct. So we're working through that with the engineers and the architects, so. The CCTV sewer, that report, they had to go, they missed one manhole, they've got to go back and inspect that, but we should have that report in the next month, so that'll be coming in front of you for your review. And then as part of that report, they'll make recommendations on some of the repairs, on their findings of that report. And then we'll be gearing up to solicit proposals for those repairs and doing those this fiscal year. Hopefully with enough budget that we can do the second, the next step of more CCTVing. CCTV Storm, they're plugging along, they're hitting lots of hurdles with Mother Nature, rain, ground infiltration, all that fun stuff. So we have a meeting with them tomorrow to discuss timelines and their request for additional time and compensation.
Have all of the Storm sewer catch basins, and mitered section's been inspected now? Have we gotten everything yet?
This basin that is under contract will conclude all, our entire system.
And it's taken us four years to do it?
I believe so, yes.
So we will, it's a question now, will we restart the process?
I don't plan on doing a full cleaning. I intend on doing like what Pelican is doing.
Just catch basins?
The problem, yes.
Okay, good, that's what I was getting at.
Yep. Moving on, GIS support, so we are transitioning all of our assets into GIS and tying that into Cartograph. We're working with, this has been an ongoing project, I think even before I started, but we're darn near close to being finished. Tetra Tech is updating everything. We've got to get all of Pelican stuff in, which we've been working on, working on ponds, aerators, things like that, so...
How do we access that?
You don't.
You can't.
The goal is, by the end of this fiscal year, is to get a forward-facing, public-facing thing.
So the plan is to make it...
Yes, to show who owns what. Yeah.
Excuse me, in the Safety and Security meeting, subsistence meeting this week, when we were talking about the Pelican system and the need for the association with Passarella, there's prob, I understand there's some problems now with incorporating a C Click Fix into the system here that might slow down that integration?
I don't anticipate that. I mean, we're doing, we're doing the inspections and things like that on our side. Maybe you and I can talk, and you can give me some clarification on what...
I only do hurt enough to be dangerous, I just...
Yeah, I don't, to my knowledge, all of the Pelican assets have been added, so...
They're okay over there at Passarella, but incorporating over here and blending in C Click Fix is where the stumbling block or the hurdles coming.
Yeah, Tetra Tech's working on...
Cartograph is not as flexible as we originally thought.
I think it's a naming thing. It's like you, you may have the ponds called ponds, and in Cartograph they're called lakes or something. So we did, it's like a matching up, like, it's a mapping thing. It's mapping being like, this field, this field at Passarella goes into this field in Cartograph, and they have to line that all up.
There's a little bit of cleanup that Tetra Tech's doing.
Lakes are misnomered, they really are storming.
I don't know, I'm just like, that's just like something I chose, I don't know if that's actually the case.
Nothing that's, we can't overcome.
Right.
Yeah, if I may, just for clarification, you say the public-facing one, for example, water lines, sewer lines?
That's not going to be on it.
Okay, I want to make sure, because that's, those are...
Just the assets that the public can legally see.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Development updates, Arborwood Phase Three Storm Water Punch List, that'll be coming, hopefully, in front of you for conveyance and acceptance at the next board meeting. We just finalized that punch list three years later. Daniel's Parkway Apartments, they're going to be resubmitting, they've changed up their design and adding a new building, so...
Which, what is that again?
Daniel's Parkway Apartments, that's the boot over off of...
New building?
Yes.
What, they put it in the water?
No, they're splitting one and adding, splitting, splitting one.
They're splitting in two different phases, I believe.
Yeah, so, so we're waiting on their resubmital. Santa Lou's, we are working through that with legal counsel.
If I might, on that, we have, we received from Lennar, Lennar's Council, a work repair list with contractors listed, and a multi-page work authorization settlement agreement that I've made comments on. Robert Cooper, the attorney for the association, has made comments on. I'll give my final comments to Chelsea and to Rob Cooper today. So we get that back to the attorney for Lennar, and hopefully we can keep going forward on it. But there was a lot of overkill, I'll call it, in that document.
What's the timeline on getting that pond fixed?
We're still trying to do it by the first quarter of twenty-six.
This upcoming dry season is the goal.
Shooting for the first...
I heard that last year.
Probably.
The year before.
At least we have documents circulating, Ed, which is progress in this realm, quite frankly.
Feet to the fire. All right, and then Garrett FM, you all see the construction of that every day as you drive by. They are putting in the sidewalks this week, and you'll see that they were able to work with us and the county and kind of meandering around some of the oaks, so that way they could be salvaged. So, that's it for Tetra Tech's update.
All right.
They don't look particularly hurricane-proof.
Tell me about it.
Approved by the county.
I'm heading to the elevator shafts if I'm in that building.
Yes, yes. Everything else will blow away.
All right, I, this next item is the flock group proposal for continuity of services. I sent you all an email about a week or so ago, kind of giving you a little bit more detail. Does anybody have any questions regarding the item?
Why do we want to, I thought we killed this with that deal with the county last week, or last month.
You did not put this in the budget, but this was, when we went to tell them that, hey, we're going to cancel the services, this is what they, this is what they offered. I said I would bring this in front of the board for your consideration.
One and done.
Then we haven't had any conversation, they haven't reached out to us, Lee County Sheriff's Office?
Nope.
I'll tell you.
Need to know if you would like to proceed with this contract or not?
I don't want to proceed.
See no reason to proceed.
What's it going to do for us if we do?
I agree. You want to vote, you want a motion or you want a consensus? A motion?
I move to, I move to not move forward with the flock group proposal.
Let's get the flock out of here.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes to terminate the contract.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
I'm waiting for that, right?
Been waiting a whole week since the agenda went out. All right, thank you.
I had my moments.
We will, so just so you know, I mentioned before, we have sixteen cameras. Ten of those cameras, we believe we can get noticed by the, by the December date. Six will have to buy out that contract, so, all right. All right, next, administrative or district manager?
I have a question. By out the contract, you mean there's a clause for a short amount of...
Early termination.
Early termination, okay. Just make sure if the early termination, if we're looking at it at three hundred dollars, then might as well continue. Like, I don't know what the cost is, like...
I think it was five hundred dollars a camera, but don't quote me on that, we're, we'll go through, yeah.
It's like three or five hundred a camera, I can't remember. It's considerably less.
It's three thousand, yeah.
Terminate.
So we'll, we will work with Tony on getting that termination out, for sure. All right, monthly reports. Ms. Laura's up first, her administration. Anybody have anything for Laura?
I don't have anything for Laura. Bob?
The bid status for ITQ 25-11 PW for the aerators, said we're going to vote on it today? I didn't see it anywhere.
No, that, because this is technically September's, or what month are we in?
That'll be next, that'll be next meeting, right?
This should have been for September.
Yeah, so because it was under my thirty thousand dollar threshold, I went ahead and approved that contract because it was going to be on one of your September meetings, so it's been...
So it's proof?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't have a problem with it, I just didn't see it in the package.
Yeah, this, it's, we're a month old on these reports.
We literally just copied them from when they were supposed to happen two, three weeks ago, whatever.
And is there, under the communication, we have a new banner for PPC AC messaging?
Yes. It's a digital banner, it's not a physical banner, it's a digital banner that...
That the one that Ms. Immerman is spearheading?
Yes. Anything else for Laura, admin?
Anything for Laura? I'm just trying to, the internet's horrible.
All right, Public Works, anything for Paul?
Oh, yes, for Laura. Laura, at, last year at budget time, we said you were going to keep track of everybody's hours and what they were doing and everything, and then at the end of the budget, which it now is, you would do a report to us as to the exact percentages that were used and all that sort of stuff. Can you do that now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can we have that for November?
We'll put that in the monthly report.
For November?
Uh...
Two weeks from now.
Yes.
We'll put that in at the end of the monthly report.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Remind me again, what is our target for the admin building and for the Phase One?
The target is one and the same, and they're anticipating substantial completion in June, but that does have...
You said April last time.
It is, they do have seventy-six days of wiggle room in there, so I am hoping April, but the contractually, they have until June for substantial.
So we only have a few months in physical, in our physical year?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. The reason why I was asking is just trying to anticipate how our business might need to change in that atmosphere. So I think we can probably wait and have these conversations next year, but what I'd like to see is, especially in Parks and Rec, what is the, you know, with Gary, her roles and responsibility, what, how is she looking to grow and expand?
We've, we're having those internal conversations, ultimately, Prax discussed it as well. I think, you know, we have the, that six-month window, or whatever it may be, kind of where we're in, in the in-between, but the telltale is to give it a year's time and see where we need anything or where we have to shift.
And what I'm talking about is, again, if we're talking about revenue-generating opportunities, let's just use pickleball as an example. You know, let's not wait six months or a year before we decide we want to do senior pickleball leagues or something structured, you know, we're, you know, things of that nature. Let's be ready for when it happens.
We're anticipating that, and so she's having those conversations with Prax, and then those will come in front of you. And all of this kind of ties back into that membership programming, and what do we want to offer the first year with limited staff? What can we offer with our limited staff without breaking the bank? And then from that point on, I mean, we know the amenities that we're going to have. We're going to have basketball, padel, bocce, and pickle, so we've got to focus around those.
And I did promise my son I would ask, I did hear like a couple months back, we did some, we did some stocking of some of the ponds. Do you know, was it just selective ponds? Have we, do we have plans to continue in other areas?
Yep, so that was put in, the pond is actually right behind the pool. We do have money in the budget this year, and we're going to time it right, talk to the vendor, because there's an appropriate time to stock. So we want to make sure we do that and then be selective with which pond we do. We obviously don't want to keep stocking the same pond.
And are we, what are we stocking it with? Fingerlings or...
A slew full of different things, I don't...
I think there's three types of fish, mosquito fish, bass.
I'd have to ask, Metar is the one who did it.
Only reason why I ask is if everything, if we're, if we're doing, I don't know what they call it, just young fish. We have so many evasive species that they're just getting eaten before they have a chance to mature, so we may have to, you know...
The Pelican program is twofold. The first is sterile carp to keep the place clean and healthy, and then the second phase is the game fish. But all the fish are purchased from the state of Florida, so I don't know if you said...
The sizes are all the same, like, we purchase, we have a...
Now, we also put in fish gates to keep them. I don't know if you want to consider that, otherwise it's just float on out the, to the six-month slew. But all the fish that are stocked, every pond that has stocked fish in Pelican has a fish gate to keep them in. Wasn't that much to put the gates in, but...
Okay, that's...
So we done with Laura? Was this Laura?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so now...
Public Works.
Paul, okay. Questions for Paul? I'll go last. No, then, okay. Just want to follow up on the road assessment on the, on the potholes on Gateway Boulevard, Griffin, is that what you had?
Yes, good afternoon. So we've submitted about thirty-eight RFAs to the county just recently, within the past couple weeks, I believe. We're just waiting on the response from Lee County, so that they could refill in all those potholes.
Okay.
Mark went out and did an assessment, and that was the results of his assessment, so...
He's on landscape-related?
No.
Okay.
And I think that's the reason why we went out, Steph did it, because we didn't want, the ones that they are responsible for, right?
Right, the roadways that they are responsible for.
I think, given that the time that the county takes to get them fixed, which is a little bit longer than what I was expecting, I think this is something that needs to be done on an ongoing basis, because out of nowhere, in a week, you're going to find six or seven, sometimes ten potholes just appear. So I think this is not a one-time thing, I think that's something that to be on the calendar for staff, like, either if it's once a month or bi-monthly, go out there and just send it all out.
That's a great idea.
Have you driven Daniels lately?
Oh, it's horrible.
Oh, it's horrible.
But they have been doing some patching, but there's a lot of potholes in Daniels.
It's county-wide at this point, but yeah, I agree, doing it, you know, maybe every two months, that's reasonable.
Okay, and then the conversation that we had with the, with the school, I wasn't sure if it's going to be Public Works or it's going to be you. You had a meeting with the Gateway Elementary regarding the queuing, is that going to be, were you involved, or is that a Chelsea?
Laura was, I was out sick.
Okay, so I just wanted to keep an eye on, you know, because I don't think we have hired detail for a while for parking enforcement on Griffin or, you know, Bayou. I think we need, that needs to take place. I know we had a conversation about looking into either hiring for detail, straight, state troopers or the FWC. I think we have never tried that before. I mean, while, while we just hire them for detail, we don't really tell them what to do, but there is a great opportunity for us to go ahead and maybe engage with other agencies, since we have with Lee County Sheriff's Office and pretty much what they tell us is, you hire us, but you don't tell us what to do. And if you choose not to enforce, then just tell them, hey, don't do that. So let's try, I mean, FWC oversees both of those agencies, so if we want to just get quotes, I mean, we have the money in the budget for it. Just, let's, let's just do a trial for, you know, not just parking, but also speeding.
We'll reach out.
Okay.
And can we add to that? I know we were talking about specifically elementary, but again, we were talking about prior to the meeting. So I was coming down Griffin for the meeting today, right, right a little bit before 2:00. I couldn't get here because the, the access to the roundabout, the cars were queued up around the roundabout, and there was no way to go. So I literally had to sit there until finally, they slowly started to creep up, and then a car in front of me went on the curb to go around, and luckily I was able to drive through. So my issue is, or at least I think one of the potential resolutions for this, and it always has to do with, with queuing. You know, when, when parents come to start queuing up, and then it backs up. I mean, if I had a recommendation, it would be, you can't queue until dismissal time. Now, Gateway High School, their problem is because they, they queue at the gate. They don't even let people inside, which is another, I don't know how many hundreds of feet of available, you know, area. So the only way, the way they can queue is out around the roundabout, or I've got pictures where they're all parked along the side. And that's not any better either. So, you know, I know the elementary school over here did a really good job a couple, you know, two years ago, last year, you know, to improve that, but we still get some queuing. But I think that the solution is, you don't queue until dismissal time. So you can't even line up until 2:30 when the gate gets open and kids are coming out. Because once they start coming out, then you've got motion. Until that, if they start lining up hours before, and what happens is now the game is, I get there, the sooner I get there, the closer I'll be. So now they're, they're backing up, you know, it used to be like 30 minutes before, now it's two hours.
Yes, it's almost two hours before.
So if we can maybe.
Two hours for your kid to come out.
Some of them are out there at like 10 o'clock in the morning.
Maybe the recommendation is that you don't queue until, until dismissal time.
Do you make that a motion?
But here, here's the issue. We don't have, we, that's my reasoning why I wanted to temporarily abandon hiring Lee County Sheriff's Office to do the enforcement. Okay, because first they couldn't enforce because we didn't have signs. God knows, I bothered the heck out of the county, and I got about 50 signs in Griffin. That was not what I was looking for. I was looking for true signs. They're like, okay, we'll give her signs. So we have the signs. So I went to Lee County Sheriff's Office, and I said, now you can enforce it. We hired for the detail, and I can count on both hands how many tickets they wrote. So enforcing is the issue. The Gateway High School is, it's, it's, there are two issues. The Gateway High School in Griffin, they will open the gates 30 minutes prior to dismissal. However, 12:45 is when they start queuing in. They, literally, they queue in Magnolia Lakes because we're the closest community and in Hampton Park, okay? So while we hiring them for detail, we cannot enforce them to enforce the law, which beyond my mind. So I think there's a great opportunity for us to partner with FWC or the state troopers and see how do the department work regarding that. But also partnering with the, you know, Lee County Schools and, and, because we did work with elementary. I do believe in Gateway High School, there is an opportunity of queuing the cars within the property, all the way to the back. I mean, like, they just refuse to do it. I have emails back and forth with, it starts with the principal. You know, she just honestly refuses to do it because it's her way. So to the point that I told her, well, maybe the engineers are wrong and you're right.
Yeah, we're going to start giving tickets out. I mean, that's.
But we can hire them to give tickets, but if they don't choose to give tickets, we don't have a say. That's the problem.
And they don't want to give tickets because they got to go to court.
I have worked with the resource officers, the two of them for both schools, and say, look, and, and, and I had, you know, my son was at that school, and I, I asked him, can you send communication out to the parents? And as a parent of no longer that school, I think I got one email. They're just not active communicating, and it is a safety issue more than anything else. Traffic is one issue. My number one issue, and it's an obligation of the school per their own guidelines, safety of their students. The students are getting drop off on the roundabout, and in the middle of Griffin, they're getting picked up, they're crossing the road. That is a safety issue. That is, and within their guidelines, and that is something that they need to be addressed. So we can hold them accountable for that.
I was on the selection committee, I was on the naming committee. We, multiple times, were told by, uh, by the county that, that the high school would, would work in partnership with Gateway, so that it didn't cause any, uh, any obstructions or any, you know, any issues outside of regular traffic hours and all those things. So we, we supported the school, them coming here, and I was a big supporter. Now they have to show that partnership in return and, you know, do some things that are not blocking our streets and our roads and causing issues to our residents.
On, on, on a highway, on State Route 2, prior to the turning lane, you cannot in. So, so it happens at Daniels, but it happens on State Route 82.
They're queuing on Daniels Parkway.
So you got the message, partner with us too. Is that what the board, it's concise with trying to get the other two agencies to do the detail with?
If we have to, one of us, I'd be more than happy to go to a school board meeting.
Same here, I mean, we have a good partnership with them, yeah.
So I did, I did have recent email communications with SRO for the, the Charter High School. Similar concerns of pulling over, dropping off, the, the asphalt, you know, deteriorating because of the cars, et cetera. I sent an email out to try to get a, a meeting set up for this week or next, next week. Haven't heard back, so I'll follow up, because typically Dave Newland, who's the school district's director of safety, attends all of those meetings. So similar to what we did in the past, where we had all four schools here, I can bring up to him, you know, the same attention of the, the public high school in addressing those issues. I do know that after Laura and Paul met with the elementary, Charter Elementary School, they did send email communication out saying that, you know, no queuing, it's per their rules, you know, 30 minutes before. But then they also said that Gateway was.
Gateway asked that they not queue until 2:30 because.
Which is fine, because we did.
Yes, you not queue at all until dismissal.
You did, I think I had asked this three meetings ago, for you to look into the, to their requirements, the LDO and the DO for the school, and if they are within the guidelines of what they were permitted to do. Did you look into that?
I haven't had a chance to.
Because that's important. Once we bring it up, I'm pretty sure there will be outside, they did not expect that many people to be in there. So I think that's, uh, that needs to come forward. Let's look it in to see what were they permitted for, what are their requirements, and, and then tackle that way.
Yeah, Madam Chair, also may want to contact the school superintendent, recognizing she's not up for reelection until 2028, but it is an elected position now, and she's the one that probably has a lot of sway with the board.
Good point.
Dr. Carlin.
She's not illegal, is she?
Uh, not, she's not in Iowa.
Is the charter school underneath her, though?
No.
That's why it's odd.
Well, no, well, the charter school has a charter from Lee County School District.
Part of it, it's under, but not everything, yeah.
But I think that's the next, start with the superintendent, because they control those principles.
And I'll make myself available, if not, they will too, and will be part of that meeting.
I'm ju, I'm ju, jumping back real quick about the road and the issues. We were talking when this first came up about doing the analysis, about road counts. I had reached out to Lee County DOT and asked, you know, when's the last time you guys did a road count of Griffin and Gateway? And they, they said, here's the, here's the map, here's where all the information is. It had been years. Lo and behold, three days later, the counts showed up on Gateway Boulevard and on Griffin.
Yeah.
So hopefully we'll get that information posted on their website soon enough, because it is September. But, you know, we do have four schools in our district.
Okay, so nothing else for Paul? No? Okay, thank you, Paul. You got anything for us?
Yep, no.
Okay.
No further updates, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Shaw.
Oh, Bill, Bill, Bill.
Anything for utilities?
I'm ready.
Anything for Bill?
Okay. So Bill, I, I want us to go over the meter project. I have received a lot of calls and messages and emails and name it all regarding Hampton Park specifically. And a quick summary, could you tell us where we stand, what are the issues that we're observing, and what can we do to better communicate with the residents, what's their responsibility, what is our responsibility, and how do we move forward?
Okay, so there has been four or five PVC fittings that belong to the homeowner. So our detailed delineation shows our box, our meter assembly, and our brass nipple that sticks out of the box. The builder or contractors have tied on with a piece of PVC, and that becomes the homeownership. We own the brass, the homeowners own the PVC. Of all the work that we've done this last week, there was approximately four or five fittings that were found to be leaking. They found them when they were digging. The leaks aren't even large enough to show up on the meter. The meters aren't spinning, so we have no indication other than a couple of the pits had water in them before we started digging, and that's documented. The current process is they are now implementing a leak report, and we get that the following day. They are also supposed to be texting me any addresses that this happens on, so that we can try to make contact with the homeowners. But we were following up with an email or a letter, whatever we have on file, to be able to get in touch with the homeowners.
Well, that's great. It's pretty, pretty mirrored communication that I had with them in lieu of contacting me, which is great. The process is really to contact the district, copy me if there's needed, educating them what our responsibility goes to and where it does not. And I do understand the resident's point of, it wasn't leaking before you touch it, but, but it was, it was just so minor.
You just didn't know it was leaking before we dug the hole.
From, I visited the site, I think, three times. I think from the three or four that you're saying, I think there was only one that I could see significantly, like I could tell that there was a leak. Everything else, it was a drop every five to 10 seconds. It was not, nothing that.
Right.
Didn't even puddle. I think there was only one that I actually saw puddle within the box. So I guess we just, I would just ask you for us to continue heavily to communicate in this community, particularly, I'm not sure why this is heavier than any other community. I know we had issues with Stony Brook, but not as heavy, I know. I don't think we had issues in Magnolia and other communities. It's nothing as heavy as this, but given that you're telling me the quantity is four or five, it's also not as much as they made it sound like.
Yes.
Because I will tell you, I probably get 30 to 40 messages from two or three residents, and it's like everyone, and that's why I went on site. So as long as we continue to send the communication to the HOA and just ask them to pass it on, like if they have a leak, please contact us. All I told them, all I need is an address. I have a leak. If you have a picture, great. I don't need anything else. I don't need to know when you bought the house, who lives in the house, and what kind of dog you have. I don't want nothing. I just want, what's the address? You have a leak, and then our staff will handle it.
If I can just add on to what Bill said, so Met Tower, every single property address that they do, that they do a box replacement, they produce a report that includes 24 pictures, as well as detailed information, pre-existing conditions, even if there's a stamped driveway, just because we've, we've had claims that, oh, they damaged the driveway. So that report is produced of 24 pictures per address. We get first, we get meter reads, you know, if they touch the meter at all, we get the read before, after, et cetera. To Bill's point, if there is a leak on that report, they check a box, and that produces another leak report, which has at least two pictures on it with more information. So we are working through these items. We, the biggest thing that we, we had, they started in Hampton Park on a Thursday, and of course, everything blew up over the weekend, right? Their Facebook, their social media, everything. I think you and I were on the phone at least two or three times that weekend.
11 o'clock at night, yes.
Yeah, so.
You think the fire hydrant was broken, but yeah.
So we.
Well, our on-call person was getting hammered as well.
So.
This is just not meter replacements, this is box replacements.
Box, yes.
Pure box replacements.
This particular section that this has happened in is box-only replacement, so we're not.
Is there any caution here?
No mechanical, we're being done.
We're not redoing any of the plumbing, we're not replacing the yolks. These little drips that were, that, that have been seen, if we were doing box and brass on those homes, it would have been a non-issue, because we would have been replacing that component, so.
So, so what, so let me just think. I'm the homeowner, right? You contacted me and you told me I have a leak on my end. What, how long are you, how long is the vendor waiting to close that hole for the homeowner to fix the leak? Or are we saying, not waiting, we're just telling them we have a leak and then just closing it up?
There's a, there's, there's a day or so delay on the closing of the hole for cleanup, now that they've gotten started and gotten out ahead.
We're not stopping our job. We're just notifying, then we were here. We, we found a leak, you need to take care of and close the hole, okay?
Leslie has drafted a letter that we have, and we'll also attach that leak report that we're going to notify the property owners. I think even to the point where you're knocking, you might be knocking on doors, right? Have you?
I, I, well, we haven't had anything since.
Everybody knock on the door, please. Okay, so.
It was, it was literally the first two days.
Everything, I mean, we had a town hall, we had, we sent the notice to their cam, who sent it out to the residents. So you know how it is, they get on Facebook instead of calling the people who can solve their problem. They call Facebook to try to solve their problem. So that is the message. We met with a couple of their board members earlier this week and told them, the message you drill is you call the district. So we may have a couple of requests coming in, seeking reimbursement of that PVC fitting. I told them they could make the request. Ultimately, you know, everybody's got a boss. I have a boss, you are my boss. And so I anticipate having at least two of those at your next meeting. But it's not our responsibility because of our line of demarcation of ownership, so.
As an example, the entirety of Pelican area that we did was box-only. There was one leak that I'm aware of.
It's just been, it's, at some point, you start to question, why is there a consistent issue here?
Yeah, and so, and so, so the twofold, so we get communication, we can just educate them as much as we can, and then just continue to have the communication with the contractor. They don't speak on behalf of the district to redirect communication to staff. So they, I don't want them to just walk away. I want them to, here's the card, contact staff, contact the district, and avoid those conversations.
We have bizarre, we have had some residents leaving their dog poop bags on the contractor's excavator.
They're literally throwing this stuff out there.
Multiple days in a row, so we are, we have identified those people, and the contractor's been told to contact the sheriff's office if they see it again, but we will be reaching out to them saying, don't do that. That's, you know, destruction of property.
We actually know who the resident is, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we know where they live.
Okay.
I mean, we're not doing DNA.
Anyway, these are just issues as part of a project.
Contact the resident, CC the HOA, and, and.
Yeah, it's been fun, so. Anything else for Bill?
No, I don't have anything else. Nothing else for Bill? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. All right. Tony, you're up.
Oh, hey, I have one, I have one thing. I don't know where it falls. Have you guys heard anything about the Captiva Bank property being sold?
Bank?
The Captiva Bank.
A question from you.
The Captiva Bank property.
Sanibel Captiva.
Sanibel Captiva Bank, that property.
Building, yeah, I haven't heard anything. I talked to Rick Breilansky on that property that was going to have the 220 apartments. That's still on hold, but nothing about that piece of property there.
All right, thank you.
The software agreement, I think that's resolved that, I believe, or finally resolved that, so we're not, take that off the list. Arter contract, that's staff's negotiating with the next rank firm, I think. Have you, have you completed that, Chelsea, I think?
Yes, that's been done. Laura's been plugging away at answering all Arter questions.
They've been getting all kinds of background stuff from us already.
Okay, so we have the new contract with them?
Yep.
Okay. Daniels Parkway Apartments, utility issues, as Chelsea mentioned in the engineer's report, there's been a fifth resubmital with regards to Daniels Parkway Apartments. The agreements that the district has for the upsizing and the irrigation wells, they're 99% done. It's a matter of attaching the correct site plans and just making sure the details and the exhibits match what's going to be in the ground. And now that they've changed the plan, the exhibits will change, but the concept will still be the same. And I'm not sure what their timeframe is now, Chelsea. Initially, they wanted to have, they wanted to start hitting the Gert and submitting to Lee County for their DO and for everything else now, in my understanding. So that's, that's obviously pushed back a while. Tullik's Office Park, I appreciate Chelsea getting the assignment of dedication for landscape monuments. So the district now owns the road and has the. monuments, where, so the district now owns the road, and has the landscape easements up front at the two entrances. So, that's, again, a good effort. Stony Brook Roads and Streets, I can't, again, thank the, the group from Stony Brook. Katie, very helpful, and Alan Levine with Becker also. They're, and their board, timely, quickly responding to approving documents, reviewing documents. Katie and I pushing the Pivis Law Firm to-
Let me throw Nan in there. Nan was amazing at being responsive, so.
You guys, you guys were in the trenches with that stuff.
Yeah.
And dealing with, and Pivis Law Firm, I appreciate them helping us, even though it took a while, with US Home to convince them there were no real downside to them on this one. There are a couple little cleanup items we have to do that we, in your board packet, one of the consent agendas items was to terminate the traffic enforcement agreement. So, Chelsea will be communicating that to the LSO and the county, the county attorney's office, and we coordinated that with Katie also on the timeframe. At the last minute, we realized we had the, an agreement needed to be terminated. Ed, I appreciate you coming to the district to sign that termination agreement.
For such a historical event, I wasn't expecting a Donald Trump pin. I didn't have one.
Somebody took it on the way up.
They took it.
Yeah, we, it wasn't a package, Ed, but, so we appreciate you doing it.
That was used for the Town Lakes Tribe.
And again, just appreciate everybody's work on, everybody worked hard to accomplish that.
Yourself included.
Yeah, well, thank you. No, and again, it was a good team.
Yeah.
You know, Katie and I bugged each other appropriately as necessary, and it was a pleasure working with her. So, thank you to Stony Brook folks. Margaret and Joe, if you can pass that on to Katie. With regards to the-
It's coming off.
Yeah, that's done. Yeah, so that's, yeah, that-
So, it really, really is over?
Stony Brook Gateway Master Association, as of 9:30, 2025, owns the roads in Stony Brook.
Answer's yes, Carol.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, but he's a lawyer, so just more words.
It's made by the word.
Yeah. So, again, the exhibits, the document, the ultimate agreement in all of its exhibits was 333 pages long. Anyways, but, and that was part of the mind-bending process to make sure everything was squared away at the end, so I appreciate Katie shepherding that aspect of it to you very much, so. The Santa Luz, I mentioned that. We'll keep pushing them now that they actually came back to us with a document. Not acceptable, but we'll push them and work with Rob Cooper, who's the attorney at Hans Loscher, representing the association. Because one of the important parts for the association is to make sure that whatever happens here from a release is only as to this particular issue, not the other 558 construction defect issues that Santa Luz folks may have. The Sunshine Law PowerPoint, still working on that, so it's still shooting for October board meeting. Reimbursement for damages to flow away, the board, we have in the agenda packet, and the, we have assigned copies of the settlement agreement release whereby the board, asking the board to approve that today, and-
That comes off.
And that will come off, and then we would transmit that to the attorney for Mr. Bradford, and the agreement requires that money to be in cleared funds to the district by October 6th. And then, I, I tried to call the state attorney's office today, but I forgot they're closed because of Yam Kapoor. And so, I just let the assistant state attorney know that this has been revolved. He's been very helpful, John Drury, who, he and I, we crossed each other's paths many years ago in the state attorney's office. He became a judge, retired, and now he's doing it part-time, so I appreciate his efforts too. The Zentor demand, we've been working with Chelsea and Leslie on that. We've gotten some movement with regards to Zentor, and their responsiveness and their acknowledgement of certain matters that have been very helpful, so I appreciate Chelsea and Leslie.
The amended and restated assessment, is that coming off?
That's, yeah, that's done.
Okay.
Yeah, that should come off. Easements for Aerators and Pelican Reserve, we had a good phone call with Bob, Chelsea, Laura, and Ed Hedges, to find a easier way to get some of those easements. Some of the easements are already of record, so we're just trying to wrap all that up. Easement for the Girl Scout lift station, just waiting for, I think, the church to sign it.
Yes.
And send it back. They're, it's debt-free, so there's not an issue of getting any mortgage holders' consent. The storage tank, we've talked about that. Chamberlain lawsuit, on that one, we have an agenda item on that also. We can handle that now or wait until we get to it. So, that's the next item on the agenda. Tree Line and Colonial Signed Parcels, I have the title work, I have the documents that are referenced in there, and I just need to go through them all, and do a short memo to Chelsea about what I think are, any issues or access, which is the biggest issue brokers are asking. I've contacted one broker.
We have, we have a value for that right now.
Well-
Yes. We had an appraisal done a couple months back, given both scenarios. He's, he's done that. It's back at P-PAC's court, if they want to pursue with-
Offering them.
Yeah, our numbers are rough, back in the envelope, so it's not a full-blown appraisal.
No, we did. We paid for that.
But there's a number of assumptions.
Yes, very much.
One quick question. If it is decided to offer it to the public, and if someone does make a purchase, do those funds go into O2?
It's the board's decision, but yes. I would suggest.
Well, I think so, yeah, because the funds came from-
I was happy with yes.
Well, the reason why, because they came out of the bonds.
Happy with yes.
Pelican Reserve. I think they'd have to go there.
Yes.
Yes.
He was happy with a yes.
How long, yes. My backup for the yes.
That's what I thought.
The answer's yes.
Board policy and procedure, I'm still working on that, so that's sort of gone off to the side, but now that we have a number of tasks taken care of, we'll pick that back up. And then, the usual signing off on various items, so. Any questions? We have, like I said, two items to address on B and C of 13.
The sheet should be much briefer.
Yes. On 13B, Devon Chamberlain, that's the lawsuit involving the alleged trip on the soccer complex. And the law firm representing, there's a new law firm representing the plaintiff, Devon Chamberlain, who pulled in mainscape, and JMS or JRA?
JSM.
JSM, as defendants also. And in that case, typically, the courts will set what they call case management orders, and as part of that, they'll have a timeframe and a schedule for mediation and arbitration, discovery deadlines, et cetera. And so, the parties have scheduled mediation for, let's see here, the date is November 12th, and what we'd like to have the board do is have, I'm sorry?
I was talking to Flavia.
Oh, okay. Is have the board delegate Chelsea, myself, and the chair, Flavia, to attend on behalf of the board, the district at the mediation session. And then, we're also asking, as counsel, communicate this with Jeffrey Hercom, who's the insurance carrier's retained defense counsel. I've worked with Jeffrey before, and we found out that he grew up in Gateway, on a call we had the other day. He's an excellent attorney, and as part of the, we'd like to have a closed-door session as we need advice and guidance with regards to the litigation, settlement negotiation or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. And we're thinking October 16th or November 6th, because mediation is November 12th. We'd like to have a closed-door session before then. So, if you, just two things. One is, have the board approve, Chelsea, myself, and Madam Chair Flavia, attending mediation on behalf of the board on November 12th, and also setting a closed-door session for either October 16th or for November 6th, with the time to be determined.
Tony, do you just want to say, doing mediation in the event that the date changes?
Because I thought I shot-
And, and what you just suggested, you said mediation on that specific date?
Or, okay, any other date.
Or, thank you.
Mediation changes.
Okay. Because it has.
Is our insurance carrier involved?
Yes, that's who we get. The law firm that's representing the district was retained by the district's insurance carrier.
Yes.
I was looking for what other issue we had.
And he's very, he's a very good attorney, dealt with that law firm before, and other districts have represented. We work well together. Chelsea and he have developed a rapport, which is great also, on discovery, so.
So, we need a motion for the designation?
Yeah, a motion to designate, I'll call it the mediation team, Chelsea, myself, and Flavia.
So move.
We have a motion, a second, on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And also have the board authorize, and I will get with Jeffrey Hercom, coordinate advertising, to hold a closed-door session either October 16th or November 6th at-
Ma-
Or at five o'clock.
Sixteenth, preferred to be on October 6th.
When do we get that? Moving it back to November doesn't give us much time to play.
Yeah, I'd rather do the sixteenth.
Let's do it to 16th, get it over with.
Yeah.
A lot of it depends upon Mr. Hercom's availability. We didn't have an answer back from him yet, that's why I wanted flexibility. I think he'll make it, Chelsea's powering.
Which JSM services, which, which vendor is that?
JSM, they're the soccer fields.
It's a new one. What time would the board want to have it? Before the regular board meeting, like, at 2:00?
We don't have it 2:00, so we could do it before the meeting. Or is it going to take half an hour?
With the time to be determined by us, how's that? If that's okay with the board. So, I'd like to have the board move and approve that.
So, move.
Closed-door session October 16th.
I move.
We have a second, on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So, 2:00 on the 16th, we'll go ahead and have a closed-door session.
Yes. The next item is consideration of settlement of claim against Chase Bradford in your agenda packet, and you also now have signed original by Mr. Bradford, the settlement agreement where he would pay the district $15,000 in cleared funds this coming Monday, the 6th, and then each party would release each other from any and all claims. And it's recommended for approval.
So, this is the final release?
In settlement agreement.
Everything's done.
Yep.
This will be, once we get the money. Again, the releases are contingent upon cleared funds on October 6th.
Okay.
So, moved. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Bob. On favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, Tony.
Just one, one or two more items. One is, Laura and I have been working with Sonia Rowley from Infomark on the conveyances or transfers out of real property or personal property in fiscal year 2425, so appreciate Laura digging through her files for that, too.
And just so you know, one of my goals for fiscal '26 is to get all of our assets into business central, so we'll have that, our physical assets, we'll have the control of the list, so.
No, no end to your scrambling. And that's all, unless there's other questions from the board.
Ready for time?
Oh, no. I just have, I'll just go for now. So, in the Stony Brook, I believe we have a balance, the, that account still has a balance, oh, four, right? It still has a balance.
How much is in there, Chelsea?
Yeah. I don't know the exactly dollar amount, but I, you know, some of the, the residents that reached out, I think, and in the board, it will be available as a credit for next-
We're not, no.
Are you going to utilize all the money now?
You guys approved earlier in the agenda under consent that the remaining balance will be utilized to pay Katie Berkey's invoices that are applicable to the road, or, and/or reimburse the HOA for said expenses, and that will zero out that fund.
That's my question.
And part of my fees also.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure it is zeroed out.
It will be zeroed out.
Okay.
So, no, no credits, nothing.
I wasn't sure, because I thought they were still going to have a positive balance.
The idea was to zero it out.
I tried.
No carryover.
That's correct. That's the whole idea, is to zero it out. And Katie and Alan Levine were kind enough to send me their redacted bills. I reviewed them and made my comments to Chelsea and Laura as to what I thought were appropriate.
We'll update the September redacted one to include the recording fees.
Yes.
Okay, no problem.
Because those were not inexpensive.
That's the only question I have for you. I just thought it was a little bit of money left over for them.
And again, I think, ended up 9:30, wrapped it up, nice and clean. They own the gatehouse, the roads, district has its easements, so we're good.
I'll call you, Margaret, let me in.
Anything else?
Now, you won't get in.
They're like, who?
Well, they did that last time.
Right?
Anything else for Tony?
We don't know you.
No. Nothing else for Tony for me, no? All right.
Your picture's in the gatehouse, like, do not-
No, my picture says not let her in.
Not a resident.
You want one of my new photos, too?
Do not let anyone in. And she's not a vendor.
All right. So, let's move on to future business.
I just want to call out that we do have a president's council meeting at the end of this month, so.
If enough people are RSVP.
28 or something.
So.
I've already responded, I will not be here.
Okay. Is there-
Actually, out of the country.
Okay.
Nice.
So, I did plug in some topics, but if you have any suggestions, we're all ears.
Well, are we going to have any attendees?
I hope so, it'll be here in this boardroom.
If we have at least 10 people RSVP, or we'll cancel, so.
Sounds good.
Anything else for future?
We talked at one time about having a workshop on aeration.
Yes.
For the ponds over here, and I haven't seen that yet, but-
That was scheduled for, it's on here somewhere.
What is it?
The aeration discussion workshop is scheduled for the first of the year, 1:15.
And Laura's going to have that report to us.
Yes.
About the amount of time?
Yeah.
Everybody spends on what?
On everything.
On everything.
All the time, on everything.
I'll cut to that detail, but I can tell you how many hours were spent in Pelican versus Stony Brook versus utilities versus general fund versus what we had budgeted for, yes.
So, let's move to supervisor comments, I'll start with Bob.
I have none.
Doug?
I know it was, I think, a couple months ago, where we lowered the weirs. Where are we at right now, as far as?
Control.
Off and on, off and on, off and on.
Okay. So, we're back up to, where are we keeping it?
We're at control, then we drop them down to about a foot below, then they come right back up, and then we drop them back down. They've been going back and forth for the last two months.
So, we, we have a structure or a schedule, and we're managing- So we, we have a structure or a schedule and we're managing--
It's not necessarily a schedule, it's, you know, keeping an eye on the Atlantic and, you know, if, right now the ponds are full, but we're at the point where we've passed peak of hurricane season, knock on wood. So we want to try to keep as much water in the system during dry season, but if something starts to brew, we do, we do open them halfway. Scared everybody.
So far, so good.
Knock on wood.
So far, so good.
Nothing else, Doug?
I think we covered everything else. I'm good.
Yeah, we all got a letter from the people at Silver Lake about fence damage and wild hog destruction. Who put that fence in?
We did, apparently, back in the day.
Question that.
From my--
We don't have any place else that I know of where we have a fence that separates the wetland and houses.
I understand.
Are we sure it wasn't the developer?
I'm sure, so that was one of the things that after, so when Elle was here, she told me about it. After Ian, we had damages to that fence, so I went back and it is on our property schedule. It's been on our property schedule.
This is the fence that's on the west side of Stony Brook that looks, or I'm sorry, the west side of Silver Lake
Yes.
that tees in up at Hampton Park and looks due west.
It's, I don't, I'm not good with directions like that.
That direction.
That one, that conservation area right here, yes.
It's an old chain link fence.
My understanding is that it was originally put in, and this is what I'm told, I'm only going by what I was told, because I was not here, is that it was put in to stop the property owners from encroaching into the wetlands because we were having issues with playground playsets going into the wetlands, being put into the wetlands. And then South Florida comes around and wrote us up, so I'm just basing that off of the information I was given. So it is out there, we're working on resolving that, we're going to get some stakes and stake it in the ground. But, I mean, they've got fruit trees in their backyard, so hogs are, you know, I'd be going to the fruit tree too.
So we're making repair on the fence?
Yes, we are.
I was surprised that that was our fence too, because I, when they contacted me, I told them, I said, this is not a require-- the fencing is, signage is a requirement, but we're development order, improvement criteria, but not a fencing that I'm aware of it.
I don't know when it was put in.
But I do recall, I was surprised that we went out there and put that fence, because it's--
It's just way back.
Yeah, I was surprised, but it's, like I said, it's been on our property insurance list forever. We've done repairs to it, so, I mean, we can always take it out of the board, so chose, so.
Carol?
What is with all the-- Scary.
All right, Carol.
Yesterday in Pelican, there was a garbage truck that part of their load caught fire. The garbage truck, so that the truck didn't catch on fire, dumped the load, called the fire department, they came out, put the fire out, et cetera. But it caused the issue of the back gate opening to be--
Resurfaced.
Resurfaced, again. And--
For the sixth time.
For, I don't know how many times. And-- I mean, there is, I understand what happened, I understand the whole thing. It's just that particularly senior citizens don't want to feel like they're caged or have no way out, or this is impeding their freedom. And some people have become very emotional about the fact. And so I was wondering in the next couple of months if we could address again the fact of the back gate opening and who can do it and when can, when it can be done and under what circumstances. I understand there were some people that for 35 minutes to an hour couldn't move. They were just, the traffic was just lined up and backed up and they felt like they could not get out because of where this fire was. It was on a street that was very close to a main intersection of Pelican Preserve Boulevard and Cypress Grove. So blocking particularly people from the, what I would call newer Pelican or the area--
Boyan, Preto?
Yes.
Everything past Cypress Grove.
From being able to get out.
Cypress Grove to Preto.
Because Cypress Grove was being basically shut down.
So this wouldn't constitute of them opening the gate as an emergency?
Well, no, they did.
Okay, it doesn't say, I would, I mean, I would say that that would be--
It took some time to--
Are you saying you want to open forever?
No, we need to streamline the time response to opening the gate.
It was very, very good.
Was it good?
It was very, very good. The problem on the other side of that problem, Carol, because my ear has been bent off too, is first of all, if we would ever consider opening it, and I don't think we will, but if it was, now we got to man it. There's a cost element to it. If we did it, the road's not big enough. The existing construction, emergency road, would have to become wider. You'd have to have turn lane privileges. If you got through all those hurdles, then you'd have to fight with the lawsuits from Preto. Those people do not want it. The people whose homes abut that road.
So I guess it's a Pelican issue for now?
It is.
And what do they want to do?
And it's good that we talk about it, but I mean--
You're telling me that was a good response time when I was opening? Okay, so that makes me happy.
I can just chime in, just add a couple of things.
However, there were people in line there who could not move and--
That's their own reluctance. If they wanted out, they could get out.
Communication issue, like--
I hear you.
Couldn't we have done better?
Well, okay.
Down the other road.
If I can chime in, so the sheriff, the police did block both lanes of traffic. So we actually fortunate that your residents are educated enough to call the district. They called us before the HOA even called us. So they said, can you go open the back gate? We looked at our vehicle tracking, we said, hey, we've got two people in New Pelican, go get eyes on where this is at. Do that, can they, can they go down the other side of the road, exactly what you were, you were saying. Said no. In the meantime, our staff, however long it takes to get from here to Pelican, they opened it up. And so, and then we were, we communicated to the police to start to direct to the back gate. Once they got the all clear and cleared up the road, then we closed the gate and put it back in.
One person, one person that was great, but was in a golf cart, I said, get out of sidewalk. Sidewalks are open.
What is the, what is the after hours policy? Would there be someone on call?
On call person.
On call?
It goes to the on call person.
And the on call person is, it depends?
It changes every week.
So someone could be in Gateway, outside of Gateway, 15, 20, 30, 40?
Yeah.
It's a variable.
And I just want to, I understand that Pelican invested a lot of money for this, but there was only one way in and out prior to this being put in. So as of right now, and I did pass the information on to Peggy, and they do have it on their agenda for next week, if they do want us to proceed and ask the city and the county what available opportunities there are to do, you know, open this up or whatever it may be, we'll take--
The biggest thing they want is a resident to have a key.
Well, that's, that was my point.
That's a different issue, but that's the biggest--
I wanted to bounce back to that is, yeah, is, is it something we need to talk about? Maybe one, one of us or someone that is, lives in the community having access or key to it?
When we, when we went to get the permit for the road, they were adamant that it was emergency vehicles and district staff only.
Well, we are district staff.
Well, I want to be clear, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, we are, we're district staff.
Hold on. Fire and EMS can have access. They, they have access to it all the time, so they can disengage it.
We're talking about if there is an issue that, you know, like that. EMS, they're busy putting out whatever, whatever. If we need an alternative action, which is to open that back gate for whatever reason and the response time either from, you know, the county or our on call person might exceed our ability for a board member to literally drive two minutes to unlock--
You're the closest.
Unlock the gate. I'm just saying, if that's a possibility as a, as a redundancy, it's something we should maybe--
I guess what the lady's saying is, we as a board will be--
Can we declare--
If there's not a staff member that lives in Gateway, the next alternative is a board member.
Yeah.
I think the issue is who can declare an emergency?
The way the agreement, I think basically it's up to the district to make that determination as being--
There'll be a fee for that, just so you know.
Yeah, I have to go back and look at the development order and or the--
They were very specific on this, that it had to be an emergency.
By the district, they bona fide. But one other aspect that Bob brought up about Preto, if I recall correctly, I can go back and look at the documents, but I think the, the city was, what was critical to the city, one critical component was everybody walked together on this one. WCI, US Home, the district, PPCA, and the Prado people.
Nobody wanted it open.
And there was, well, and so the conditions, I think, were part, I had to go back and look at the agreements. I think that was the understanding, where these were the conditions and what this will take place. And where, but I think that could be, it's an important consideration also.
Yeah, you'd never get permission from that HOA.
See, and, and there's all kinds of, we can play out every scenario. I mean, in that circumstance, you know, if, if Pelican residents were, you know, we gave you guys keys to the kingdom, you both live in Old Pelican, would you have been able to access and go open the gate? No, you would have had to gone around, which we go, again, there are so many different scenarios. As of right now, we have a policy in place, we have an on call person 365, seven days a week. They have my personal number, if they need, they have her personal number. Yanabel has all of our numbers, so I think the response time that we had was fantastic. You know, we made sure Yanabel has our contact information in the future.
We have staff who live in Gateway, so.
Yeah.
Was it a fact that the police were not directing them to the back then?
So that's what I was going to ask, people were-- Could they benefit from code, like this is a perfect opportunity for them to benefit from code red, specifically messaging the residents and saying, hey, before you leave the house?
We didn't do that, did we? I didn't see it.
Yeah, so I think this is an opportunity for Pelican, for communication out there to, hey, because the district can just target Pelican and send out that communication and say they, you know, they will front of the back, so I think that we could do better.
Because from what I heard was that a couple of the police officers had no idea there was a back gate. And when people asked them, because they would say, well, go out the back gate, where's the back gate? Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, and we--
I don't know, and I don't know how to get there.
And part of, part of the, part of that was, you know, we had a staff person at that back gate to direct. So I think it's like, this whole process from our perspective, we need to definitely discuss from an internal side of things, because people don't, a lot of people don't know where the back gate is. But I can tell you from my firsthand experience of witnessing and being a responder to a crash this last weekend, traffic is the last thing that they care about, the absolute last thing. So they don't care if you're sitting there five minutes, 25 minutes, they're going to address the emergency at hand. So, because I had that same frustration this past weekend. So, well, we can discuss it and continue to work through internal processes, but if P-PAC and the board wants us to try to pursue through the government agencies to amend DOs or whatever it may be, you know--
Have that come from Pelican before we do anything, like, I don't want it--
Absolutely, absolutely.
If that's what they want, we'll support it, whichever way they want. Okay, and then meanwhile, if we can partner with, you know, just bringing back code red for communication purposes, back engage in that conversation.
Yeah, that was a missed opportunity.
I know we did have some pushback prior to us sending out communication, and I don't remember if it was Faye at that time, that they weren't passing out that communication because--
Well, that's not a code red issue.
But, but I'm just saying, I want to make sure--
We're resolved, most of them, Carol's gotten in that. I think that part of it's now resolved.
I just want to make sure that they don't--
The Zimmerman Communications.
Yeah.
We're getting better, we're getting better.
Any, any other comments, supervisor comments?
Not for me.
No? Okay.
Come identify yourself, Joe.
I didn't want to make the grandstand, Joe Schofield, Karina. We do have a safety and security committee and we have the front gate guard with a car. And I'm not quite sure why he couldn't have gotten involved with that and told the police there's a back entrance. He certainly knows where it is and that why I'd say, hey, that person knows where it is. And that person could have had them directing people how to get out once that gate was opened up. I think there's a lot of resources that just, there was no organization. I don't think anybody planned for it. But I do know that some people parked their cars and walked home and left their cars in the street, which is not good news either. So it was total disarray, I believe.